Good evening and welcome to the Rockland Select Board meeting of Tuesday, May twentieth, two thousand and twenty five. Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded for playback on WRPS at youtube dot com forward slash WRPS Rockland. Please go to wrps dot com for further information. Please also be advised that the open meeting law gives the Chair of a public body discretion to decide if public comment will be permitted, but the law does not require that a public body allow public comment or public participation during its meetings. Our Chair Tiffany Needham had a family commitment this evening, so you got me again, folks. Sorry. The first item on the agenda is a pledge of allegiance. Chief Seeley, will you please lead us?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And next up are community announcements, Courtney.
Awesome. Hello, everyone. Welcome. Today, Tim White is here to do some of our community announcements specifically. He's here to talk a little bit about Rockland's Memorial Day ceremony, so I'm gonna just toss it over to Tim to kick us off. Tim, do you want to join us up front? Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. So Memorial Day ceremony will be held, just like, you know, the last few years anyway, at the Veterans Memorial. On Monday, we'll start at eleven A M. We have several students participating from both the middle school and the high school. The band, of course, will be there, fire and police, honor guards, so similar. Honorary guest speaker this year is a member from the Army, so I'll do the introductions then. So anyway, and looks like we're gonna have beautiful weather, but I do recommend for those who are coming, you know, feel free to bring like a lounge chair or something like that to be able to sit, because everybody's kind of standing out the parking lot there. We are also flagging all the veteran graves in town Saturday, rain or shine. We do that every year, so the Saturday before. We're gonna start at Holy Family at nine A M. with the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts. There's usually about fifty or sixty of them, and then the older scouts, like the Eagle Scouts, and they take care of Mount Pleasant Cemetery. And we have, you know, basically some families take care of the smaller cemeteries, like Spring Lake and one off of Spring Street, and then Maplewood. So that's all happening Saturday. We're giving the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts having some pizza after at the VFW. They're hosting, so very thankful for that. And McDonald's is taking care of the band on Monday and giving them some free meals for participating in our Memorial Day. So that's what's going on for my part of the community announcements. I don't know if there's a few others.
That's the only community announcement we have scheduled for tonight.
So, Tim, just a question. We've been doing this now at the memorial for the past several years. Can you just clarify the reason for that? Because there's been a lot of people that have been questioning why we stopped doing the Memorial Day Parade. And I've explained, and I think it still holds true, that as some of the veterans, you know, advance in age, it just becomes more difficult for them to participate in that ceremony. Is that still the case?
Yes. Yeah, very much so. I would say they get discouraged, you know, they can't march anymore, they have to take a vehicle. It does seem like there's smaller crowds over time, so maybe they're a little discouraged at that. But, yeah, they just... The next wave to pass the baton to, to kind of organize everything and make it happen, is barely hasn't been there. But COVID kind of changed when this all started during COVID. I think in two thousand and twenty, we may not have had a Memorial Day ceremony or parade. Definitely didn't have a parade. I'm not sure about the ceremony, because I showed up just after that. But since then, it's been a ceremony while I've been here. But that's kind of the general... Likewise, I can add the Veterans Day Parade is at risk with the other towns as well. I don't know what they're gonna choose to do as for the tri-town parade. You know, the town of Whitman was talking about stepping back. Abington's been talking about it, so, you know, we approach that come September when we start planning out the Veterans Day Parade, but this year it's supposed to be hosted by Whitman. And Whitman has a new V S O. I don't know what's really, what's gonna happen until, you know, we get in, well into the summer, and we start talking about it some more.
Well, they had a, I think they had it three years ago, and they had a tremendous turnout.
Yes.
I recall. I mean, that was a very good turnout. They had Congressman Steve Lynch was there and stuff like that as well. So I think it's just, I think it's just important that we dispel that it's an action being taken, you know, by the town against the veterans in any sense, and that it's just a...
Oh, correct.
A lack of, I guess, participation on people's parts, and not through any fault of their own, but from a mobility standpoint, it's just not able to be done. And you guys put on a tremendous ceremony down at the monument itself.
Thank you.
Which is, you know, I think it's very serviceable, and as a kid growing up in the sound, yeah, of course, we love the Memorial Day Parade. But in lieu of that, and if you don't have the people available to march, then what you guys do is fantastic, and definitely appreciated.
Yeah, I should mention, the Rockland Allied Veterans Council is really the one who puts things together, they kind of organize it. The Allied Veterans Council is represented by members of D A V., American Legion, V F W., AmVets, and so forth.
So what's the next step, though, Tim, to get that next generation of veterans engaged and willing to participate in these ceremonies?
I don't have a quick answer for you.
Of course.
I don't know. I, you know, it's, we could start talking to those who we know, you know, in our circle of friends and our networks and so forth, to maybe foster that along, or just start out by volunteering and connecting on one thing, and little by little, you're just, you, all of a sudden, you're organizing a parade, you know? But I don't have a, I don't have a quick answer for you. But I do think they're, they are looking for the next generation to pass the baton to, you know, and possibly, you know, be able to, you know, be on the sidewalk and wave the flag and see the parade in front of them, you know, and get to enjoy it from that perspective. The guys and gals, they've been doing this for years. You know, it's the same people...
It is. It really is.
You know, twenty-five, I don't know, maybe even longer than that. It's the same people who have been coordinating this stuff for all of these years, so... But, yeah, it is time to, you know, pass the torch.
Yeah. Does anybody else have any questions?
I look forward to attending on Sunday. Thank you for all you do.
Monday.
Monday.
Monday. Monday at eleven.
The last day of the weekend.
Thank you very much. Did you want me to speak about anything else for the Veterans Office?
Yeah, I knew Tim was gonna be joining us tonight, so I thought if he had a few updates to share, if you all would indulge him in that, I think that that would be helpful.
Yeah, real quick, just a brief. So my office now has a volunteer, which is great. Her name is Charlotte Sullivan. Unfortunately, she's away right now, so she couldn't join us. I wanted to introduce you face to face. She's a Marine Corps vet. She does multiple things during the day, so I call her and ask, hey, can you help me out with this? And, you know, we kind of figure out a date, date and time type thing. But just to give you a few examples of what she's already participated with me on, just in the past month and a half or so. She helped me put all the flags together that are flying on Union Street, which normally I'm by myself doing that, and it's taken up a lot of time. She helped me with that. We did a meet and greet with all the veterans at Rockland Housing at Studley Court. And then I had a call from a wife of a veteran who's housebound, asking, you know, do we provide like, you know, respite care, anybody visitation, that type of thing? And we really don't. And honestly, in the past month, I've had four of those calls. Prior to that, I've never really had requests like that. So I didn't promise anything, but I coordinated with Charlotte if she would be interested in meeting with the veteran and sitting with him and providing his wife a chance to, you know, take a break and maybe go shopping for a couple of hours. And she did, and we worked it out, and we're not doing anything set. There's no, you know, every Thursday, we're gonna be, we're not doing that. But she did, and she described, she said it was a great time, wonderful two hours she spent with the veteran, and really enjoyed herself, and wants to do more of that. So we're looking at that type of stuff to kind of expand into the community. Other than that, just a few other things. I'm trying to coordinate the painting of the Navy guns, so the three-inch fifty-cal guns, one's at the V F W. and one's at Union Square. They haven't been painted in twenty-one years. I talked to the Navy Historic Commission, they gave me the requirements of what we need to do, so I'm in the process of gathering the paint and supplies. I have a volunteer, Eagle Scout, who's gonna take care of it. And then after that, I take photos and I send in a report every September to the Navy Historic Commission, so, yeah, looking to try and take care of that in the coming weeks, summer months, but definitely before September. And then we received motorized wheelchairs and motorized scooters, if you will, and we've already been passing, people donate them, you know, please give this to a veteran. It's not the easiest thing to, you know, find, but we'll hold on to them for a few months in inventory. Gave one out the other day. I think we have a home for one of the scooters that we have, so I'll end up, I'll still have a motorized wheelchair, and I'll have a motorized scooter still in inventory. Few other things we're looking for homes for, people donated me air conditioners, microwaves, stuff like that. So we'll hold on to them for a little while, but after, after a certain amount of time, you know, then I'll look for, you know, somebody else who may need that type of stuff, but we're trying to find veteran first.
So, Tim, I could just stop you there. So if any veterans in our community are looking for any of those items, they should reach out to you directly?
Yes.
Great.
Yeah. The veteran van, the wheelchair van, very steady, very busy. I'm booking throughout the whole calendar year. So Mike Kelleher, who's our part-time driver, he's, he has several weeks where he's driving every day. Now, it might only be like three hours to V A. in Brockton or something like that, but we have driven to Boston Medical Center, to Tufts, wherever, wherever these medical appointments are, we will drive them to them. We have several wheelchair veterans that we've specifically brought to like Boston Medical Center and Tufts. Those are longer days, when we go to West Roxbury and Jamaica Plain and so forth. But the van's been steady. The, I guess the note for the community is to call, if you have appointments scheduled in August, call me now to see if the date's open, because if we're going on Jamaica Plain or something, the van's gone for that day. So if you do need, you know, transportation resources, it's free, give me a call. And the spouse can join, there's passenger seat, there's other seats, you know, that type of thing. So that's been very steady. And then in June, the last thing I'll mention is, June is recertification month for the veterans and widows who are receiving Chapter one fifteen, so Massachusetts Veteran Benefits. So it's recertification time, they basically update me with their bank statements and so forth, any income changes, and we process their benefits for July through December. It's typically a very busy time in receiving all the paperwork, herding cats.
Right.
So, anyway, that's kind of the major stuff for right now. I don't have too much more to expand, you know, later down the summer, other things will pop up.
Great.
Thanks, Tim.
Did you have any... Okay, I had a couple of questions, or one question, actually. So any students should reach out to you if they want to help out and maybe get community service hours? Is that possible?
They can't, right, yes.
Okay.
I have to think through some of the stuff like...
With flagging the graves.
Like, do, right. That type of stuff is great. So I just kind of think through, you know, the timing of what they need and...
Yep. What is your office phone number, Tim? Maybe WRPS can put a...
Sure. Seven eight one six one six six eight zero eight.
Okay. Fantastic. And also, a friend of mine has a service dog, and she goes and visits elderly people, but she'd also make it a point to visit veterans with her dog.
Oh, that's great.
Really popular thing.
Right.
I'll hook you up with my friend, her name's Cindy Barry.
All right, great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just one thing. I know there's a ton of articles that you put forward at town meeting.
Yes.
Thank you for all the work you did getting those together.
Thank you.
Congratulations on getting them all passed.
Thank you. I'm really happy for, well, not only the veterans, but we had two articles in there that impact National Guard and Military Reservists, and I hope they know about it. We did post something in the foyer at the entrance, and also in the assessors' office, so if they come for property taxes or something like that, you know, hopefully, hopefully the whole community's getting informed. And it's all been posted on social media and so forth, trying to get the word out to all the veterans, National Guard, and Reservists. So thank you very much for that. Happy for Rockland.
Fabulous.
Thanks, Tim.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Okay.
I guess I will chime in with one community announcement, and that is that Monday, Memorial Day, the Town Hall offices will be closed.
Okay.
Just for the public's knowledge.
Okay. Next on the agenda is approving our minutes from the May sixth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Great. Okay. Next up is new business.
Right. So, first thing on the agenda here is annual reappointments. For reappointments, we typically do not ask for reappointments to come in and introduce themselves, so I will just ask that you all vote to reappoint those as listed here in your package. Pretty sure you might need to read them and then vote them.
Yes.
And then we can talk next about the new appointments.
Yep. So, so we always throw the reading of the new appointments to the new guy, so take it away, Steve.
Sure. Do I need to, do I know, do we need to read the...
Yes, she do.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
What if there's someone that's...
Hold on, did the Chair, does the Chair recognize?
Yeah. We're getting...
I wanted to ask a question.
Um, sure.
Do you have to take one to the microphone? Okay. Robert Stevens, one thirty, here. What if there's like somebody, like new appointment and a reappointment in the same one?
So I think we're gonna address that during the new appointments section, because there are, there is one seat that is open that has two applicants for that appointment, and we'll discuss that during the new appointment, since there's a new applicant as well as a reappointment, so...
How many up there, how many reappointments are up with a new appointment?
Say that again?
This one.
This is the one?
Yeah, just you and Deli.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So I will make a motion to reappoint the following. On the Americans with Disabilities Act Committee, there's three-year term. Anton Materna from four sixteen Market Street, and Richard Laurie, one Leah Drive. For Capital Planning Committee, three-year term. Richard Harris, sixteen Morningside Drive. Conservation Commission, three-year term. Lorraine Pratt, seven seventy-one Hingham Street. Counsel on Aging, three-year term. Cinda Childs, twenty-four Lancaster Street. Andrew McCarthy, fifteen Old Country Way. William Sutherland, seven Forsythia Lane. For the Cultural Council, three-year term. Amy Lynch, three fifty-six Levin Road. Director of Emergency Service, sorry, Director of Emergency Management, annual appointment. Scott Duffy, eighty-six Stanton Street. Defense Bureau, annual appointment. Thomas Ruble, two forty-two Union Street. Forest Fire Warden, annual appointment. Scott Duffy, eighty-six Stanton Street. Historical Commission, three-year term. Tom Reagan, five seventy-one Liberty Street. Inspector of Animals, Ian Davidson, four ninety Market Street. Memorial Committee, annual appointment. Jeffrey Nigerian, twenty-two Bradford. Memorial Committee, annual appointment. Jeffrey Nigerian, twenty-two Bradford Street. Tony Materna, four nineteen Market Street. John Melvin, twenty-one Bradford Street. Richard Laurias Senior, one Leah Drive. Southfield Redevelopment Board, three-year term with Weymouth approval. Tom Henderson, one oh two Arlington Street. Sealer Waits and Measures Inspector, annual appointment. Thomas Ruble, two forty-two Union Street. Tree Warden, annual appointment. Dave Taylor, three twenty-eight Summer Street. Zoning Board of Appeals, five-year term. Robert Baker Junior, nineteenth Everett Street.
Okay, um, I, I would like to take two separate votes on this because on the Council on Aging, my mother-in-law is one of the, um, councils-
You can, you can vote on it, just recuse yourself from the Council on Aging vote.
Okay, all right. So we'll take one vote and I recuse myself from the Council on Aging vote. Okay? Very good. All right, um, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of all the reappointments? That's a vote. Okay, thank you. That was, you read that very well, by the way.
Yeah, it happened a while. Do that on Saturdays and Fridays.
There you go. Sounds like you have a fun weekend. Oh, okay. Um, okay, the next on the agenda are appointments. Uh, first up is the South Shore Recycling Cooperative, one open position. Um, you could, do you want to chat about that, Courtney?
Yeah, I'll just briefly, um, so for new appointments, we ask that those candidates come in, introduce themselves. Um, for the South Shore Recycling Cooperative, we have one open position and there are two applicants that, that presented themselves to the Select Board. The first applicant is incumbent, Delshaun Flip. She's our health agent. She manages our existing site recycling center.
Is she coming down?
She is, um, on a scheduled vacation, so she is not in the office to, to, um, be here tonight. Um, you have her packet, her packet in here. It's got her information and her, you know, credentials in there. And then we are also joined by, uh, Mr. Robert Stevens, who is here, and he is the, um, other applicant for this one open position. So for this particular position, the Select Board will need to make, um, a recommendation for an appointment for this one open position for the next three-year term.
Okay.
So I don't know if I'll leave it to you all based on what you're, what you see in your, in your package. Um, you know, the only thing that I will say is that, you know, Deli has been serving on the South Shore Recycling Cooperative for nine years. She's currently their chair, um, and is very interested in remaining on the, on the board.
When's her term up? You know?
Her term is up at, right now, at the end of June, technically. Like, she was appointed in October of twenty twenty-two.
All right.
But the clerk's office does annual appointments in June to follow statutory appointment.
Okay.
Um, so that's how we have determined we will be doing this moving forward.
Okay. Yeah, and I mean, I, I'd also like to add, um, because Deli's not here, I spoke with Claire today at the South Shore Recycling. She's the Director of South Shore Recycling Cooperative, and she has a, a very good working relationship with Deli. And, um, she, she, you know, recommends Deli for the position. So that's, that's what I have on that. So, um, also up is Robert Stevens. Um, Robert, do you want to come up and?
And maybe while Robert, while you're getting settled, just so you all, um, are aware, if you, if you're not already, the South Shore Recycling Cooperative is technically, you know, separate from, it's not a Rockland Committee, but the Select Board is required to make an appointment, um, that is your representative on that board. So that is how that works.
There's two representatives for Rockland.
Yes, correct. The other, yeah, the other representative is Dave Taylor, so.
Yep, okay.
Yep. Sorry, go ahead, Robert.
So, go ahead.
Okay, um, my name's Robert Stevens. I'm, I'm the Chair of the Board of Health here in Rockland, and I live at one thirty-eight Merrill Street. Um, I was first introduced to the, uh, South Shore Recycling Cooperative when I, well, I wasn't really told about it when we first got on the board, but we, I mean, it's something sort of pretty well-known in town. And I know that a lot of the other towns that I've lived in bef, I mean, I've lived in Rockland off and on for the last twenty years. I went to the Jefferson and the high school. Um, I just wanted, you know, the, I, I noticed that the previous members, when I did look into it, were always like one hundred percent of the time Board of Health members. Um, and the last one was, uh, Scott Margolis was the last Board of Health member. And then there was, um, a vacancy up, um, in, I think it was twenty twenty-three at some point. And I had approached Deli and asked her if, um, you know, what she thought. And she kind of like, um, you know, suggested that I not get into it really and just kind of kept saying that it was very, very separate from the Board of Health, even though the Board of Health oversees trash and recycle pickup here. And, um, we just recently went with a new, um, a new, um, I guess, third-party, uh, yeah, trash pickup, um, company. And we went, um, I think it was, we went with Allstate Waste, and then before we had, um, Re-
Republic.
Yeah, Republic, yeah. And, um, so, you know, we've, I've been on the board kind of like, you know, voting and overseeing that with, um, Deli. And when I approached her about it, she kind of like, just said that they're very, very separate and didn't really recommend that I join. And then, um, I saw the meeting with Dave Taylor when he got appointed. And, um, he mentioned that like Delshaun couldn't get any of the current board members to get onto it, which was kind of confusing and interesting. But, um, you know, I noticed that she is, you know, not a resident of the town, and, um, and we did have an internship this past, um, year where Mass DPH would pay for a graduate student to come out. And, you know, you could, the board could train, because like many Western Mass, um, towns don't even have a full-time health agent. But I think state law requires, I think it's seven thousand people and above that you do employ a full-time health agent. So sometimes the board, the health agent is the preceptor for the intern and sometimes they're not. And we had gotten approved, the board approved it, we had gotten approved for it, but then kind of, um, Delshaun had reached out to Mass DPH and basically like got it canceled, I guess. And we just wished that she had talked to us about it. But one main thing that she kept citing was how busy she is and how much work that she has on her plate. Um, so like, so far with being, you know, overseeing all of the different things, um, that the health agent has to oversee. So I figured that, you know, between all of that being incorporated, um, you know, her citing that the reason why she kind of went around the board and asked the state to cancel our internship was because that was paid for, that she, uh, she was very, very busy and, um, and kept citing, you know, how, how busy she was. So, um, whereas she's, you know, not really there to do as much as we would like her to, and she finally just got her vacation, um, this, this May, I was kind of looking to, um, well, at least want to correct the record and let everyone know that there was some interest on the Board of Health in maintaining that a board member keep it, which has always been the case. And then, um, in that, uh, that a resident of the town could maybe, you know, be on this board and that, um, you know, where she intends to, um, retire in December, that, you know, this is a three-year appointment and that, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind serving on it. And I'm actually pretty, um, enthusiastic about serving on it. So it's really, it's about it.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Robert?
So what specific qualifications do you bring to that South Shore Recycling?
Um, I've included everything in my-
But the audience doesn't have this packet, and anybody watching at home doesn't know. So if you could speak a little bit about what your background is specifically outside of, you know, as you've already mentioned that you're, uh, on the Board of Health right now, uh, what specific background experience do you have in that field?
Well, aside-
That you would bring value to being appointed by the town of Rockland?
Yeah, so aside from being on the Board of Health that oversees the trash and recycling pickup, um, I do intend to graduate next year, God willing, um, with a bachelor's degree in public health. And in that, towards one of my majors, um, or requirements for my majors, I did, um, take a waste management class that was, um, Public Health eleven, I don't even remember the class code, but it was one, um, one of them. I can get my transcripts and send that to the board as well, if, if you need that. But, um, aside from that, I've also worked on, um, Green, the Green Energy Board in Abington, or Green Energy Committee, excuse me, in Abington, and have kind of s- grown up in different, or, you know, lived in different towns on the South Shore, a lot of them member communities of the South Shore Recycling Cooperative. I believe it's fourteen towns here on the South Shore. And, um, in that capacity, we've also had a lot of like hazardous waste initiatives and, um, you know, just a lot of sustainability and recycling initiatives that, um, I worked when I was Vice Chair there in Abington. And so between, you know, my experience there and here in Rockland, as well as my education, um, that's just about what I would use to, you know, answer that question.
Anyone else? Three?
I, I guess I have a question. Obviously, if, um, a non-resident is currently on this committee, there's not a requirement that it's a town resident to put them on this. I just want to make sure.
Who's the non-resident?
Deli.
Deli. Delshaun is not a resident of Rockland, but it is not a requirement for you to be a resident. It is up to the Select Board to represent.
Yeah, when we lived in, when I lived in Abington, um, there were a few like rare cases, um, where the Select Board would, I guess, appoint a non-resident, um, like if they were maybe like a business owner or something like that. But, um, aside from the non-resident aspect, it is my understanding, and I did get confirmation recently that, um, although she, I guess initially intended to retire last year in the fall, that she's retiring this coming December. And that's, you know, given that it's a three-year term, I just want to not only see a resident, but a resident that's willing to, you know, serve the rest of that term.
And when you, when are you up for reelection?
Next year.
So in April?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's a chance that you may not be on the Board of Health at that point?
Very slim, small chance, yeah, but I'll still be a resident.
Some chance, okay.
Yeah. Well, I'm glad you gave us some background because, um, you know, when you were elected initially, it was on a write-in. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. Yeah, a lot of people, I mean, whereas most people just check a box, a lot of the residents had to go about the trouble and I guess wanted me so much that they had to go about actually writing me in, in my address, rather than just checking a box.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll, uh, I'll make a motion that we reappoint Delshaun. I'm, I'm kind of, I kind of like the idea that we currently have the sitting chair, uh, not, not, uh, Chair of that committee.
Yeah, and, um-
So that's a motion.
Okay. Do I hear a second? Yeah, I'll send it.
Okay.
I'll send.
I'm taking a backseat on this one. It's, uh, I don't love the idea that it's a contested seat without representation for both committee members. Um, there were a lot of accusations kind of thrown about, um, that Delshaun's not here to defend herself. That's kind of what kind of made me go the other way, because if that's the representation in a meeting, in a public meeting, then that's the representation on that committee. So that's kind of where my thought was, because of the accusations that, that are being made without the ability. So I decided trying to envision what that looks like in a meeting representing the town of Rockland, you know?
Well, I mean, there's a, if there's any specific accusations, quote unquote, I could respond to, like-
What bothers me is, so I'm a manager in my day job, um, and you are currently the Chair of our Board of Health?
Yes.
Delshaun is your employee.
Yep.
And the way you were talking about your employee is not right. So to represent Rockland as an appointment from this board gives me great trouble.
What do you mean? Like how I was talking, like specifically?
About how you were talking about your employee and accusing her of really not having time to live up to the demands of the job.
Well, I mean, that was in a email that she sent to me in writing, that when, in regards to the internship program specifically listed with the MHB president in there, and also test, like, it's public record, I can send that to the board too.
But that seems to be something under the jurisdiction of your board and not something to be hashed out here as an opportunity for you to-
Oh, we tried to get an internship, we tried to get an intern to help alleviate some of that, and it was, she went around it.
Disappointed that that didn't happen, but that's really not the forum to be discussed here. So I-
This is a forum to chat yourself up for the position, rather than tear someone else down.
Well, I, that's exactly what I was speaking to, the ability to alleviate some of that workload from our health agent.
Yeah. Is it true that recently, um, you and Deli got into a shouting match in the office and the police department had to come assist?
That's inaccurate. I mean, a shouting match, no, but there was many different, um, occasions where, yeah, she's like threatened the legal system against me a few times, yeah.
Okay, um-
But I don't think the police-
Well, I don't-
I, I remember, um, Doug came down and was like asking, I mean, in addition to her having issues with, um, the town collector, I mean, there was one time when she worked in the, in Assessor's Office that she had to, that she had to be- Well, this, I mean, this was a question that I was asked.
I hear a motion to-
I gave a motion, you gave a second.
I gave a second. All those in favor of appointing Delshaun, reappointing Delshaun? Okay, done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Next on the agenda. Okay, um, oh, next on the agenda, oh, the Rogers Middle School Civics-
Wait, apologies.
We have two more, two more appointments. Sorry, sorry. The Council on Aging, do we have Sandra Collins?
Yes.
Okay.
Sandra is joining us as an alternate, correct, Sandra? For the, the Council on Aging, you're the alternate for the three-year term, is that correct?
I-
Got you, sorry. I'm just giving information from Sue, sorry.
Hi.
Hi.
Welcome.
Yes, why don't you tell us about yourself?
I had to come here and give a speech or whatever.
Yeah. Where, where are you interested in, um, the position?
I just think I'd like to be more involved in the, the council and then I think in that capacity. I was invited to be on, with, by the President, so.
Very good, okay. And do you, do you go to the Senior Center?
I do, I go a lot.
I've seen you there. Yeah, fantastic. Well, that's, that's fantastic. Thank you for stepping up. Then, does anybody else have any questions or comments?
No, I commend, uh, folks stepping up, um, to volunteer for the town. Uh, it sounds like you're already actively involved at the Senior Center. Um, so to, to want to give your time to, you know, making those services better, I commend you for it.
And it does say that, uh, Andrew McCarthy, the Chairman of the Committee, has recommended her, and he actually reached out to me last week and, and, you know, voiced his approval of Ms. Collins in, in that position. So I'll make a motion to appoint.
Okay, a motion to appoint. Do I hear a second?
Second then.
Okay. House is in favor? Welcome.
And we received notice today that, um, the Cultural Council, um, appointment, um, has withdrawn.
Oh, she has, okay.
Their request, so, um, we can skip over that.
Okay, great. All right. Now, the next item on the agenda is the Rogers Middle School Civics Project Presentation. Um, is Alice De Oliveira and Karen Fernandez here? Welcome, ladies. Would you please come have a seat?
You can pull that first chair out for her. Yeah. Just pull that, pull that, yeah, sorry, so she can get by.
Yeah.
No, just get it out.
Just so she can go by.
Sorry, guys.
No worries, you're good.
You're doing great.
That was the tough part, getting up to the stage.
Do you want to damage the slides or do you want me to focus slides?
I can do it, thank you.
Hi, so what brings you here this evening?
Um, first, good evening, and we are very thankful for each one of you guys for giving us this opportunity. Thank you, Laura Childs, for answering our emails and working with us to be here. And our topic that we chose, that's something that's very like important to us, is the inclusivity and involvement of the- and involvement of immigrants in our community. We would like to, oh, sorry, we would first like to talk a little bit about ourselves because that's one of the main reasons why we chose this topic in the first place and why we chose this issue in our community. My name is Alice de Oliveira, I'm a student at John Rogers Middle School. I moved here from Brazil a couple years ago, five years ago, in hope of a better, safe community, safe town, and that's what I found in Rockland. And, but, at the same, because where I came from, it wasn't a very safe place to be involved in, so this is a place where my parents go beyond their way to like encourage me to get involved in this community, and that's what I try to achieve.
Um, my name is Karen Fernandez, and I'm also from John Rogers Middle School. Um, my whole family is from Minas Gerais, Brazil, but I wasn't born there. But um I am still connected with the immigrant community. My parents are very hardworking people, and they have been here for about tw- over twenty years, and, but they still don't have the involvement or encouragement in the community. Um, that slide talks about how the Eighth Grade Civics Project is a state-manded, state-mandated and a student-led project designed to increase civics participation and engagement. It's an act that was signed by Governor Charlie Baker in two thousand eighteen, which allows us to analyze this issue that affects our community.
I'd like to talk a li- a little bit how, how we reached this issue. We saw that, like, our parents, they didn't have as much information given to them and like encouragement, so we went our, out of our way to interview people that we knew about, topics that they thought were like issues in our, in our community. We also received our feedback and connected common trends, and we created surveys to reach a higher like data and people that we could, such as students from the ESL community in school.
Um, the data that we received from the survey show how immigrants and non-English speakers are not involved, and how they either don't or are stuck in the middle of encouragement in the Rockland community. According to the surveys that were sent to ESL middle school students and night English students, the Portuguese survey shows forty-one point two percent are, aren't involved in the community, while the English survey also shows forty point four percent of immigrants that aren't involved and also forty point four that aren't sure. Um, a majority of immigrants and non-English speaker, non-English speakers that took the survey agreed there should be more involvement in the community.
And some solution that I came up, we both came up with when we received all the feedbacks and, and everything that we thought about, it, one of them was the International Food Night that I even talked to Laura Childs about, she gave me this idea. It is a great way to bring and immerse cultures together and establish a relationship between our community and trust. And we could also ha- uh achieve more volunteers, we could like get immigrants involved by asking them to volunteer during this night, or even like other people, like even not, non-immigrants, if they want to like get uh more closer to our community and be like a uni- unified town. A second solution would be reaching out to church, such as Holy Family, to encourage voluntary involvement. It will allow us to reach a high immigrant percentage and population because it's a very, as a, as an immigrant, we're very active in our religious practices and, and we would find somebody to translate, to communicate the language, the message in both languages. And also increase the number of flyers, even though we do have some translated flyers, I do see a lack of some of communication sometimes, especially from the, oh, an example that we saw was the water uh that just happened, the problem with the water. We saw, I was talking to some of the students in middle school, and they told us about how his, their parents, they didn't know, sometimes they had to co- come to them and tell, or they didn't even get the information. It's not always, but I feel like so, that's something that it has to be reinforced, so it doesn't happen as often. And one thing that I feel like is very necessary is finding a representative to work in a, in the office, so that way we can, they can bring up issues and complaints that we have that we wouldn't be able to formally like go up to you guys and everything to talk about it, but they will, they will have a representative to come here and talk about issues, solutions, and things that we can do to improve the community.
Yeah, and once again, we would like to um thank for your time and support that you have given, and again, to Laura Childs and Tiffany Needham for giving us this opportunity. If you guys have any questions, you may say it now, or you can email us.
Yeah, anybody have any questions or comments?
I want to start with this, uh, my daughter's a fifth grader, Rockland Middle School, um and I told her you guys were coming. Well, it's, the conversation started, she said, we're having, uh, we get to take civics in eighth grade, and she's very excited about it, so I mentioned that you guys are coming here tonight, and so I meant, she's either watching now, we'll be watching later to see your presentation. Want to commend you, it's really brave of you guys to want to come up here and speak in front of the Board and speak to the town. Uh, you brought up a lot of great points today, um like took note of the non-translated alerts related to the water issue, I think that's, was a big mess. Uh, we do have a, a large, really Brazilian community in this town, um and so to not have that easily accessible, I think, yeah, we can do better. So thank you for highlighting that.
Welcome.
I just, uh, great job, um, just like Steve said, it takes a lot of courage to get up and speak in front of people uh like that, so I'm very happy that we have uh future leaders um, um across, you know, the, the spectrum of um residents who are willing to, you know, get involved, um so, great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I agree with everything that my colleagues have said, as I said, it takes, takes a lot to get up here in front of the Board of Selectmen as eighth graders. It looks like your presentation was thoughtful and your information seemed, seemed accurate uh and, and very concise. But I, I would say, you know, one of the things that I do want to try to encourage you guys to do is, is don't feel as though uh Town Hall isn't approachable. You know, there may not be somebody in Town Hall that might be able to speak your language necessarily at this time, but there might be somebody within your community, you guys speak very well. Come to Town Hall, and, and that's how we kind of start building that, that participatory bridge, right, where there's liaisons between the two. You guys have, don't feel as though you're a separate community, we, we want you guys to be part of our community. So whatever you guys can do, whatever motivation that you guys take from this presentation, don't let it, don't let it end here, continue to try to push that engagement and hold us accountable when something doesn't, doesn't fit your expectation, because you guys are equal citizens within this community. You know, I'm, I'm friendly with the owners of Moneros, uh, I've known them for a long time, they're my, my next door neighbors, growing up, uh, great people, and I know one of the things that they used to do when people first came to this country, they would work on translating documents for them and setting them up with, you know, filling out job applications and stuff like that, and letting them know. But come up here, send people up here with somebody that, that can translate, so that we can, we want you guys engaged. We, we've talked about this for years, and I've talked to Laura and Paula a thousand times, telling them, get somebody to run for selection, you know, come on up, you know, we're, we're, we're willing to have, we're more than willing, we, we, we want you guys to be involved. You guys are a big demographic within our community, and you are a part of our community, so, you know, keep going, don't let the, don't let the project end tonight, okay?
I totally concur with that, and I commend you uh so much for coming up and, and speaking about this, and um, and trust building is very, very important, you know? And um, you know that the Portuguese Festival they have every year in Rockland? It's like, I never hear about it and I see it, and you guys know how to party, and I would love to know when that is, because that's pretty fabulous. And International Food Night's a great idea, too.
Didn't they say that was your idea?
Oh, yeah.
I feel like you're patting yourself on the back on that one.
Oh, well, I know.
They exposed you on that one.
We should, I, they, I know.
She did, but we worked together.
Yeah.
Well, you put it on paper, that's fine.
Yeah, well, it's, it's, we used to have one at the Charter School every year when my kids went there, it was, it was awesome. So um, and um also, you know, you might want to talk to your school or in your class, you're going on to high school next year, so maybe have a student representative come here every, you know, to every one of our meetings and take notes, right? So um, we have Andrea Davis over here, who has come to every meeting for how long now to take notes? About, about eighteen months, yeah.
And what grade are you in?
Yeah. So, yeah, so let's continue the conversation, and um, you know, it'd be great if, you know, within our Town Hall, within our government, with our community, um, there were more friendly faces that, uh, and people from your community that will engage and participate, we want that, too, so um, it, did you have something to say, sir?
One few minutes, please, my, my English is not that good. Sorry.
She's my daughter.
I'm Alice's father, and I'm, I'm so proud.
Of course, yes.
And I, I'd like to, to, to say, uh, me and my family love, love, love Rockland since the first time we went here, and I only need, I only like to thank for all of, all of you, and I, we try to participate, all of the parties, all of the, the, uh, how can I say, like Memorial Day, Rockland Day, and in the Huxley Park, and we love it. But uh today, I, I, I really like to, to mention, as a teacher for twenty years, me and my wife, we were a teacher in Brazil for twenty years, a history teacher, and I, I loved the, the history of the Rockland and the United States. We live here like our both, both.
First place.
Both cities, both places, and I, I really love it. And I need to mention the, the, the work of the school. It's an amazing, amazing work. I, I, I work in um fif- fifteen schools in Brazil, uh, elementary, um, middle, middle school, high school, and college, and it's a am- amazing work. Uh, you have a, a, a very, very nice school over here, and I really like that our community, uh Brazilian community knows more, know more ab- about the, the school. And I'm, I love, I, I really love the work of the, the school, and sometimes I, I become emotional, because um the school is amazing, amazing. The, the, the teachers, uh, thank you, thank you very much.
Well, that's, that's so fantastic to hear, thank you for saying that, and um kudos to you, too, for raising a brilliant daughter, you know, and you, too.
Thank you.
To you, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Glad for joining us. And ladies, I gave my business card to your teacher. Anytime you want to get in touch with us about your ideas, please reach out.
Thank you. Fabulous. Okay, um, all right, next up on the agenda is the CDBG Project Cap Waiver Requests.
Yes, so in your package, there are two memos from CDBG. These are project waivers, um, as, as has been explained in the past, the federal government usually sets limits on these grant awards, and so um every now and then, CDBG comes to us with a request to waive the cap um for specific projects. These projects, um just for the community's sake, are really projects that focus on critical health and safety improvements um for community members who are in need. Um, they go through a whole application process and work with the CDBG team. Cap waivers in general have become more common due to just the rising construction costs, so um I don't see these going, I, I, I anticipate we may have a few more of these in the future, so um the Board has previously a- approved similar waivers for, for past projects, and so um all the information is provided by Wayne and Christine from the CDBG program here in these memos. Um, if you have more questions for them, I can invite them back to the, to a future meeting, but um generally, we recommend approval on these.
Just a quick question.
Yeah.
So first I want to, because I had to, I had to Google it, uh, Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, um, and so these are federal funds?
Yes, federal funds.
And it looks like they are coming out of fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budgets?
Yes.
So there's, seems like there's plenty of money that they're trying to use from previous years on this?
Yeah, there is a, actually a waitlist, and these projects tend to take a little bit of time, and um we, I think the last time I spoke with Christine and Wayne, there were like maybe thirty-five projects on the waitlist. So I don't know if they're trying to expend it, like, there's not like extra money in there, in this program, but.
There's a fixed amount of time that they can spend.
Yeah, there's a certain amount of time, yeah, exactly. I don't know if that answers your question, but.
Yeah.
It does.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve both.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor? All right. Um, next up on the agenda is other new business not reasonably anticipated?
Sure, so I am going to take just a couple minutes under this category to address the Boyle Water Order that was issued on Friday. We did invite the Water Superintendent for the Abington and Rockland Joint Water Works, and we also invited the Commissioners to come today, um, they are not able to join us tonight, but anticipate being able to join us at a future, very, in very near future meeting, um, to kind of answer some of the residents' questions that have come up. One thing that I will acknowledge here is just that, you know, we received some feedback that, you know, not all residents received a robo-call or a text alert, and so I just wanted to take a moment tonight to bring everybody's attention to, oh, oh, hold on, I'm gonna need this, bring everybody's attention to our emergency notifications, um which can be signed, you can sign up for emergency notifications in two ways through Rockland. One is through um the Notify Me Text Alerts, which is.
It's on the blue bar.
Too fast, yeah, it's going too fast, it's right here. On the main icon, just right underneath the image on the main screen. You click on this, it'll take you through to sign up instructions, the, the instructions to sign up are right here, right underneath there, it's a little bit smaller print, but I encourage residents to hop on there and get signed up for text alerts. We use this system quite frequently for, you know, any board committee updates and also emergency types of notifications. The other place that you can sign up is under the How Do I tab? If you go to Find, it's under Emergency Notifications, click on Emergency Notifications, and you can sign up through Smart 911. I've also put a post out on our Facebook page, it has a direct link to the Smart 911 signup, um but I, I would encourage residents um to get signed up for these, and businesses to get signed up for these notifications. It's the best way for us to get in touch with you in these types of events, to make sure that everybody has all the relevant information that they need. That's, that's my big update for, for tonight, that's really the, the only update I have with the Boyle Water Order, other than, um, you know, it was lifted as of yesterday, um and we're expecting to hear additional updates from the Abington-Rockland Joint Water Works in the, in the coming days, so.
I think that, I think that that's the important thing to state, is that we don't have an update because we haven't been updated.
Correct.
So we're waiting to hear, just like everybody else is, as to what actually went on from the Abington-Rockland Joint Water Works.
And we have reached out with specific questions around what the source of the contamination was, um what is the notification process, what is the testing process, what is that protocol, what is the notification protocol? These are all very legitimate questions, um and I'm hopeful that the Abington-Rockland Joint Water Works will be able to join us to. to address those questions in the very near term. Um, obviously, this is critical infrastructure for, for Rockland and Abington and some other communities. And, um, you know, there is, there is a misconception about whether or not the town has any control over the Abington-Rockland Joint Water Works. That is a, it is a quasi-independent agency. We do not tell the Abington-Rockland Joint Water Works what they can and cannot do. Um, they operate independently, and therefore, you know, we do not want to be speaking on their behalf. Um, and I, I'm not going to speak on their behalf tonight. So, um, again, we have invited them to the Select Board Meeting this evening. We, and have, they have an open invitation to come and address residents and the board, um, as soon as they can, and we are, we will await for their responses to the, um, handful of questions that we have sent over to them. In the meantime, if anybody has any specific questions, um, they can reach out to me with those questions. Um, you can find my contact information on the website, it's cbeergard@rockland-ma.gov, and I will do my best to convey those concerns, questions to the, to the water commissioners and to the superintendent. So, um, I'll answer any questions that you all have, um, but that's the update that I have for this evening.
Any questions or comments?
Uh, just, I'll say this, um, just reading through, uh, the various comments throughout the weekend, um, some misconception, and I think a lot of government misconceptions have to do with education and understanding the system.
Exactly.
Why I think the civics classes in the eighth grade are so important. We didn't have that when I was in school. If you wanted to learn about government, you had to join the Student Government Club, um, in your spare time. Um, the Water Department is, is a public utility. It isn't a private for-profit business. There was some comments out there about folks asking for, um, refunds or, you know, um, vouchers of that kind of nature, but all funds that are appropriated and collected, um, through your, your usage fees, go to supporting our water system. Um, so if we were to do something, uh, the Joint Water Works were to do something like that, it would need to be paid for later, and that would be through raising rates in the future. So you're essentially robbing Peter to pay Paul, short relief now for a larger bill tomorrow. Um, and again, I think it comes down to education, just understanding how all these things work, um, that folks don't get ahead of themselves. We're upset, too. Um, I'll say that, you know? It was not fun boiling water to wash dishes. I'll say that. Um, so, a reminder to folks that us on this board and the commissioners on the, um, the Joint Water Works, our residents in both Rockland and Abington, they're dealing with the issue, too. Um, I believe, you know, unforeseen issue, sometimes these things happen. Uh, we have to, um, open air water supplies, uh, Pond and Pembroke and, uh, the Hannigan Reservoir in Rockland. Um, so sometimes contaminants may get in, but looking forward to their updates.
Great.
Um, I guess the one question I have is, what, um, discussions, if any, did we have about possibly, maybe like an emergency management stepping in and providing water? I know it was only, you know, two days, and it probably wasn't a long enough window, but is that, did we have those discussions at all?
Yeah, yes. Those, both, um, both emergency management, um, professionals, Fire Chief Duffy for us, and the Abington Emergency Management Department, um, very early on had a conversation about it, and, um, you know, there was a discussion about it, and should it have gone on longer? They might have considered something like that, um, for a longer duration, or should there not have been any option, like there was like massive lead contamination or, but because the Boyle Order took care of the contaminant that they were concerned about, they felt like there was a reasonable solution, um, in a short enough window that it wasn't, um, it, it wasn't enacted at that point in time. Um, but there was a discussion about it. Um, we've had a lot of discussions, as you can imagine.
Sure.
Here at Town Hall over the past couple of days, um, about what we, you know, might need to do differently or better, um, and, you know, what types of feedback we've been receiving, and so we'll continue to debrief on that and, um, make sure that all the key departments are engaged and involved, and that we have, we continue to build on some of those functions and those response, responses.
So I guess part of what my point is, is that, uh, just because we weren't announcing anything, that doesn't mean we weren't working on it.
Correct.
Exactly.
Yep.
Why aren't they doing something? Why aren't they doing, we were, just we
Yep.
That the appropriate people were looking into it and coming up with a, a, a plan for if this did, you know, you know, luckily it was only two days, so, um, you know, at least we, people out there can know that the, the appropriate professionals were very involved behind the scenes. So just don't, just don't assume that because we're not, you know, singing it from the rooftops exactly, everything that's going on, doesn't mean we're not doing anything.
That's correct. And there are certain, like, regulatory frameworks that we have to work within. Um, there are legal requirements, so, um, obviously, the safety of our residents is first and foremost, but, you know, there are frameworks that we also have to work within, and as John mentioned, we were working behind the scenes, both internally with our team here in Rockland, but also on a larger scale with our neighboring communities to figure out what was the best path forward. Um, and hopefully this is far behind us, but, um, more to come, so.
Yeah, so, um, I also want to, um, add that, um, all day long, I was fielding resident calls and questions and calling the right people, and, um, Cody down at the Water Department was my go-to, and all hands were on deck at, at our Water Department to correct this as quickly as possible. So, I just wanted to say kudos to the commissioners and the superintendent and everybody there, so, and that's it. Anybody else?
And kudos to you for your public outreach. Notice that on social media.
Oh, yeah, thanks. Yeah, sure. Okay. Um, next up on the agenda is old business. Courtney?
I have none.
You have none, okay. Uh, Select Board Liaison Updates. Anyone? The older? No. Okay. Um, I have nothing as well. So, Assistant Town Administrator Report and Correspondence.
I'll be very brief tonight. Um, just a quick update on Doug. Doug is out of the office, dealing with some personal family matters. He, uh, will be back in the office on next Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, so, um, we look forward to welcoming him back.
Great. Okay. All right. Um, next up is Select Board Comments. Uh, comments and opinions expressed by individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of the Select Board and are the opinions and comments of only the individual member. Uh, Select Board Member O'Donnell.
Sure. Um, want to once again, um, echo what Veterans Agent Tim White said earlier at the Memorial Day Observance, um, on Monday, May twenty-sixth at eleven, in front of the Veterans Memorial, in front of the stadium. So, uh, I'm looking forward to attend and encourage folks to attend. Um, notice today, Rockland Recreation, uh, I think it was four or five pages of different, uh, programs that they're running this summer, so please head on over to rocklandma.myrec.com, check out all the programs that they have on deck for us. Uh, once again, it is still Mental Health Awareness Month. Um, I encourage folks in, you know, thinking about Memorial Day and, and Tim's service, one of the leading causes of death for our veterans is suicide. Um, so, we want to remind folks that it's okay not to be okay. Uh, dial nine-eight-eight if you are in crisis and need help. Uh, Rockland Cardinals, uh, it's a kind of a, a member of the Cranberry League, season opener, is tonight in Situate. Uh, the home opener is Thursday, uh, May twenty-second at seven-thirty. I've been asked to throw out the first pitch. Uh, hopefully don't make a fool of myself. You know, all that coaching Little League's going to come in handy. Uh, and then they have a doubleheader on Sunday at home, uh, the Veterans Memorial Stadium, uh, starting at five PM. So I encourage folks to check them out. They put on a good show. A lot of Rockland native, um, you know, collegiate athletes that are home for the summer on that team. Um, and then one last thing I neglected to mention at our last meeting, that it was Teacher Appreciation Week, uh, the week of May fifth through the ninth. Um, when I got home, my wife is the president of the Phelps Pack and gave me an earful. Um, and so I want to say, um, my heartfelt appreciation goes out to all the teachers and support staff, uh, across all of our Rockland schools, for what they do in each and every day for the children of Rockland, and that was echoed today by one of our residents, so, I completely agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Select Board Member Eldon?
Uh, yeah, a couple things. Um, two weeks ago, I just want to thank everybody who did go up to the library for their book and bake sale. I understand they raised, um, over fifteen hundred dollars, which is a very good, uh, very good day for, for them. Um, I also want to thank, uh, Tim White for everything that he does for our, our veterans. Um, if you haven't gone to the, the service on Memorial Day, I strongly recommend it. It's always, uh, very well done. Um, and then finally, I just want to, uh, again, thank our student representatives for coming up today. Um, I understand that it's, it's, especially in today's world, it's very difficult to, to speak out, and, um, it's very encouraging to see, um, some future leaders who are willing to, uh, to do that. So, um, thank you very much.
Great. Select Board Member Eldon? I mean, oh, off, I'm sorry.
Go again?
Yeah.
John, you got anything else?
No, I'm, no comments.
So, so these guys pretty much said everything, but I just want to wish, uh, wish the best of luck and for a good time at the prom this week. Uh, Friday is the junior and senior prom for the classes twenty-five, twenty-six. Uh, just, you know, wish them all well, that they have a good time, but they also, uh, use some intelligence that they've gathered over the years and remain safe. And that's it.
Great, thank you. Um, yeah, uh, I also wanted to echo what everybody said, and Tim does a fabulous job as our Veterans Agent, and the ceremony for, um, Memorial Day is extremely moving, so I, I also encourage as many people to attend as possible. Um, also this week, um, uh, Select Board Member O'Donnell and I attended the fifth grade Dare graduation, and it was really remarkable. So congratulations to all the graduates and all of the students who are continuing with the Dare Summer Camp. So, kudos to you guys. And, um, with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting and enter into executive session not to reconvene.
I'll go ahead and advise Chair, I have one more question for the board, if I could.
No.
No.
No?
Nope.
Well, I could if you let me.
No, I, I will not. Thank you.
I can't, I can't, I'm not allowed to request that you not get involved.
I'll, I'll make a motion to enter into an executive session not to reconvene.
Not to reconvene, per MGL.
You're, you're out of, you're, you're out of order.
This is out of order.
You're out of order, sir.
This is out of order.
Yep.
You're out of order.
Yep.
The chair denied your request, so.
Yep, request denied, so. Um, so I would like to entertain a motion to
Read, read the reason again, yeah.
Yes, uh, to enter into executive session not to reconvene for MGL Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One-A Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with unions, clerical, police patrol, and police officers. Um, the listings of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may be in fact, uh, discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law.
Motion.
Okay, do I hear second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, I'd like to take a roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.